Row, Kyle.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner.
Here.
Alderman Johnny Bug.
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gregg.
Here.
Alderwoman Kathy Holt.
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. Before we go to the approval of the minutes, I'm sure everyone's aware that a great community person in Henry Bartlett passed away. There's no announcements at this time. Costner-Malory is in charge. I'd like for us just to have just a brief moment of silence in memory of Henry. Thank you. Another item, they're having the memorial service for Dr. Carol Hood at the First Baptist Church at 7:00. This meeting will end somewhere between 6:30, 6:40, somewhere in that timeframe for everyone to have an opportunity to attend that memorial. Okay, item three is the approval of the minutes from the December the 10th, 2013 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. The next item is to present an appreciation award. Kelly Stokely, if you'd come forward, please. Is Sarah here?
No, she's not. She's already gone back to school.
Okay, just come and look here. This is the City of Newport Volunteer of the Year, Kelly Stokely, in appreciation for your dedicated service to the citizens of Newport by your tireless efforts to improve the community through volunteerism. We appreciate you very, very much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
We've got one here for Sarah, if you'll just wait. Meeting where she can attend?
You can. He may want to be there.
Okay. We're ready.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Communication from interim City Administrator James Fincham.
Mayor, I only have one thing to report, and I'm sure some of you may be curious about the status of the two buildings on the river down here, the old beer joints. Of course, we contracted with E. Luke Green to come in and remove the asbestos. Been in contact with them. The holidays kind of held that process up, but they're assuring me that we will be able to move forward on that by the first of the month. So hopefully we'll finally get to going on.
Okay.
That's all we got.
Thank you. Item six is the appointment by the Civil Service Board, Don Jabo Francis, back to the Police Civil Service Board. That is their recommendation to council. I don't think that even requires a vote because that's the pick that they're allowed to take by charter. Item seven is reports from committees. Don Hurst, I think, has a report here. It's self-explanatory. Does anyone have any questions for Don at this time over any matter? Thank you. Any report from the Tanner Preservation Alliance?
A little bit. Evening, Council.
Good evening.
For those I haven't seen, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Since our last meeting, I think I mentioned to you guys that we had worked with Community Design Center in Knoxville, Tennessee. We recently received approval from the Community Design Center, and they are issuing a MOU that we should receive any time now to assist us in the project of renovating and helping draw up some plans for the Tanner building. We, I thought we had received it already, but we apparently have not. It's in the mail, but they have expressed a lot of enthusiasm for the project, and through them, we have received a lot of other efforts from other organizations around the area to assist us in the effort also. In December, in late December, I submitted an article to the Plain Talk that was subsequently published last week regarding the Tanner building. The article was intended to be, well, was an effort of our leadership class of 2013 that just graduated. One of the aspects of the project that we were going to do was each, once a quarter, we were going to publish an article about a point of interest in Cock County. The first one was on the Tanner building. That article was well-received in the community and has generated a lot of interest from other organizations also to assist us, one of which being the Habitat for Humanity here and the Highlander Group in Maryville, Tennessee. The Highlander Group has asked us to submit a grant proposal for a small, it's a small amount of money, but it is a good start for the new year. We're also involved in several other grant proposals that we will be submitting in the next few weeks, hopefully for substantially larger sums, but at this point, that would be the first grant that we would probably receive for the new year. But in order to do so for some of these projects, we have had to, we need permission, I think, from the council to solicit, not bids, but estimates for work that some people are willing to do in lieu of payment. They're donating some work, and we need access sometimes to the building for them to get in and see what they can do and estimate what it will cost. But, and we'd like to get permission from you guys to get some access to the building and also to solicit those estimates. Again, I want to reiterate that we're not soliciting bids for anything, and we understand that's the purview of the council and the Purchasing Department of Newport, but we do need to get estimates in order to submit some of these grants. So with your approval, we'd like to, we'd like to do that at some point in the next few weeks with your approval. Any questions?
Are there the grants submitted on behalf of the Tanner Alliance or in conjunction with the city?
Well, on behalf of Tanner.
Nonprofit?
Tanner, yeah. As a nonprofit, yes.
I'll make that motion with what Mr. Dodge just said.
Secure estimates.
Secure estimates and maybe access to the building.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion?
One question. Does the access go through City Hall?
It does.
Or is it?
It will have to go through.
Is that okay with you, Trey, that way? But it still runs through here, or you want to just?
No, that's perfectly fine with us, yeah. We don't have a problem with that. I guess what the process would be, we'd just need to contact Mr. Fincham and ask for just key or whatever.
Well, first of all, we've done it the past week, but we've based it out on the name of the act, so sometime they want to get in, I've had somebody that can add.
Okay. But it's not an issue.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, the next item under Old Business, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, and I understand in some conversation with Bill that you were going to check on some possibilities. Do you want to share that with the council?
I'll share it with the council, thank you.
Okay.
Just let the train come through here first. I believe it's, I tend to progression, traffic control, some of their engineers and auctions, and we've got about four options. First option, we can leave it the way it is. Second, take it down. Third, we can leave you that and make you a caution light for $5,000. Or the fourth option, we can parallel it with Woodlong. It would work in conjunction with Woodlong, and that would be $13,500. So it's just up to what the City Council wants to do.
Okay, the flash and caution would be?
The flash and maiden cost would be $5,000. And to make it work in parallel with Woodlong, it would be working like it used to be in conjunction with, it would be $13,500.
Council discussion?
First of all, I don't think we have any. According to the state of Tennessee, I say this and say it, according to the state of Tennessee, the state of Tennessee says take the red light down. So we have already voted for option one, and option one says take it down. Thank you.
And a letter has been sent that, to that effect, that the city had voted on an option, and they were on board with them carrying through with the safety grant for the two red lights east of Newport here.
So we've already voted to take option one.
Yes.
Take it down. We've already told the state.
Yes.
The same thing.
Yes. Yeah, that was several meetings ago.
So we got no option. Then I don't know why we're even voting on it again for it. If it's already out there that we're going to take it down. Well, didn't understand all, that's one of the case in points that they sort of slipped this through, I believe, on us. But setting them new lights and going for all this, we're obligated, they want to say it once we vote for it, you're right. So that's our, we got no option, and I wasn't making a word of that, I was talking. But I just want to know, I did, I thought we could work it out, but we can't.
Yeah. It was five, zero vote to accept the state's plan and option one. Option two, I think, was going to take parking off of a part of the street, and we didn't want to do that.
Create turn lanes.
So if, Terry, if that's what they voted on, then the light comes down.
Mayor, may I speak?
Uh, yeah, yeah, just a little bit. We're going to try to push through here, but you're welcome to.
Two minutes.
I've asked for the red light, and he said that we could do this. According to the alderman, you have to reapply for this grant once again because the wind has done fell through because you didn't do it last year.
We have.
Not according to your alderman.
We sent a letter. He called and requested a letter after, you know, there was discussions come up after the original vote on option one. He requested a letter of support from the City of Newport, and that letter was sent based on the vote of option one.
So you're telling me the grant money's done on its way?
It's in the process, yes. It had to, we had to vote on something and send a letter of more or less being on board with what the state was going to do, so they're in the process of working on the grant.
I don't understand why you're willing to come downtown and not take out the parking, but then you want to take out my red light. I don't understand. You're willing to work with the other businesses on down the street, not our street.
Your time's up, Mr. Gregg.
That's what the council voted on, option one.
It says you have three bandits.
Two.
Are you in my range?
So it's already been done, so it's just, nothing to be done on it, but take the light down.
When was the letter sent?
Years ago, bitch. Give us a name.
We sent, I don't know which letter y'all, but I can tell you is after you all voted to do option one, we sent into the state that we had voted to do option one.
Have you received anything back?
No, the grant's going through the process.
Yeah, it takes, because I think at a later meeting, the mayor brought out that they had said it would take a year and a half probably before that he would actually start the project.
Yes.
So if it's going to be?
So I mean, like, the money is not on the way. I mean, the project is, the way the state does on their projects, you go, they have a list of approved projects, and you get plugged in, and you work your way to the top. And I think that someone, the mayor reported, if I recall correctly, and I'm going off, strictly off recollection, the mayor reported that some gentleman he had spoken with said it would be probably a year and a half before our project made its way to the top. Because we had talked about, because that was when it come up about the light once before in one of the many times it has been discussed. And, but we finally, the conclusion we came to was, well, we've, you know, it's not an imminent thing that is happening right now. They're not going to start working on the project next week. It's going to be a year, a year and a half before they start working. According to what the mayor had reported at that time. So I know we discussed that at a meeting, three or four meetings ago, I'm not sure. We've talked about this so much, it starts to run together on you after a while.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to new business. Item A, consideration of resolution 2014-01, modifying the personnel manual.
I've spoken, I think, to pretty much all of you on this. Basically, what this boils down to, it's two issues. It is some, a couple of personnel policy guidelines that are not currently up to date with the current law, and what I'm proposing doing is bringing this in just in line with the law, so we're like, it's on the National Guard leave, and it's on the workers' compensation pay for people who are out longer than eight days with a work-related injury. And TML picked up on that one and has asked that we do this. And then the other one, we just, we discovered is just part of the process of going through everything, and we found that our current policy is not clear, and this clears it up to where it mirrors the law.
Council discussion, or do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion?
Mayor, sir?
Yes.
Do you have permission to speak on that?
Yes.
I don't know what the bridge looks, I'd like to know what he's talking about doing, and that meaning that they're just going to pay us for the 160 hours, we're talking about military pay. Tennessee Code annotated says, it's a state law, the state of Tennessee says, "I shall be entitled with leave of absence from any representative or respective duties without loss of time, pay, regular leave, or vacation, or any other rights or benefits which otherwise entitle me." And this is in Tennessee Codes 8-33-109. I don't know if you have a copy of that, but I have a few copies here if you would like to look. It also says down, "Not to exceed 20 working days in one calendar year." Our policy says 160 hours, and how they got to 160 hours, they took 28-hour days, and that's how they got to 160 hours. The state does say that a working day is eight hours, not 12, like a policeman work, or 24, like a fireman work. But a policeman and a fireman are going to run out of time way before anybody else because we use it 12 and 24 hours at a time. That state law says you have to pay me the 160 hours or 20 days, however you look at it and read it. It also says, "After the 20 working days of full compensation, any public employer may provide partial compensation to its employee while under orders, competent orders." So if I get called to AT, I run out of time every year at AT, that's in the middle of the year, most of the time in June, July. When I come back, when I have drill, let's say I work on Saturday at the fire hall, have drill on Saturday as well, can't be in two places at once, after I run out of my 160 hours, I don't get paid any money. But in our handbook, in Part C of the military pay, Part B talks about the 160 hours. Part C says pay differential makeup. The problem we had last year is the fire department paid me my pay differential makeup. They didn't pay Sergeant Hickenbotham from the police department. And so that was incorrect. It was not fair. They paid me the difference, they didn't pay Hickenbotham the difference. So what they did is they went back, the alderman went back and saw that it was in the book and elected to pay Hickenbotham his time. I don't know what his proposal is, but if the proposal is to take away the difference in pay, that's an incentive pay that I strongly appreciate, and I thank you for giving it to me, and I'd like for you not to take that away.
But does that say loss of pay, the 20 hours?
It says, "After the 20 working days of full compensation, any public employer may provide partial compensation," which means that you can elect to pay me the difference. And in our handbook, which is the cities that you gave me, it says, it says in there that you will pay me pay differential pay.
But what you're saying there is you want to pay the difference that you've lost, not saying it was.
No, it says you can elect to pay me that. And somebody prior did elect to pay me that, that's why it's in the handbook.
That is not what we did. What we did was, we paid the full amount all year. Instead of cutting it off anywhere or paying a differential, we paid the full amount of salary all year. It was double dip, and the law does not say to do that.
Check, sir.
Now, when I talked to the state about this, I talked to the man, the second man in charge at the state over the National Guard, and he said that he's never heard tell of a policy like ours. It was very generous, and he wished that everybody could afford to do that. But he said it was unheard of that anybody does what we've been doing. And so what I have recommended is that we go by the law, not that we modify it any way, that we give more than what the law allows, that we only give what the law allows. That's what the policy's for. Now, if we, if we could afford to be overly generous, that'd be fantastic. Certainly support the military, no question. But you're talking about thousands of dollars that we paid out that the law does not require that we pay.
So what are you proposing that we do, pay the 20 days?
That we go by what the law. Now, while he's talking about 20 days and eight-hour days, and what I did was, his is not the same. I use the same formula that we use in the sick time. And that, if you take, and you retrofigure it, if you take somebody's annual salary and you divide it by 52, that gives you what their weekly salary is. Okay? Everyone but the fire department is based on a 40-hour week. And so if you do that, and that's the standard, you divide that weekly rate by 40 hours, and that gives you your hourly rate. The fire department has a 56-hour weekly rate, and you divide their weekly rate by 56 hours, which gives them their hourly rate. So what I, and what I have done is to get the policy to mirror what the sick policy does, that adjusts for those hours. He will get more hours than what Hickenbotham gets. Hickenbotham will get the 160 hours. He'll get 220 or 224, something like that. It's four times 56, whatever that comes to, I can't think off the top of my head. 224, is that it? Because his weekly, his weekly hours are 56 hours. But when you're looking at the difference in the pay, what the law says is, you can't lose any pay. It's, you gotta, you know, if you make more here than you make at the National Guard, we got to make up that, we got to make that up. You can't make more, you can't lose money. And so, but if you're going to look at the hours, it's on your bottom line at the end of the week. It's not looking at your hourly rate or any of that stuff. It's what you make for the week. You're not supposed to lose any money on what you make for the week. So I've adjusted that to where that his hours will equal out to the same number of weeks that Hickenbotham's will. So it's not 160 hours per booth. It'd be, it'll be in your paperwork, you'll see. For him, for firefighters on a 56-hour work week, it's 224 hours. Because their weekly rates are based on 56 hours, not 40. Now, when I talked to the guy at the state, that's what he said, that about the eight hours. He said the 20 days is based on an eight-hour day, is what that's based on. But they don't work, but the eight-hour day is also based on a 40-hour work week. And they don't work a 40-hour work week. They work a 56-hour work week with an adjusted hourly rate of pay, but it comes out the same at the end of the week, if that makes sense.
Are you going to make them to give firefighters more hours, sir?
Yeah, that's what's in there, yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
You get 224 hours because yours is, it's based on the exact same formula we use on the sick time. That's where I came up with it. Because if it works on the sick time, it ought to work with this. Because you're talking about 20 days being four weeks. So if you looked at four weeks of sick time, the sick time, everybody but them gets 40 hours per week in sick time, eight hours a day. But they don't. They get 56 hours a week in sick time. So this is the exact same formula that is used for the sick time. And I've run it by their supervisors, I've run it by several people, and everybody says it makes sense to them. And so, I mean, I want to be as far as I can be. But I, we just can't afford to be overly generous and pay people thousands of dollars that by law we don't have to pay. Again, if we could afford it, if we were rolling and we just wanted to be that generous, it'd be great. But I just feel like it's, we're at a point where we can't afford to be generous, we've just got to meet the law.
Again, I will say I have reviewed it. I think it does comply with the law, so I don't think there's any issue there.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just want to ask someone to clear this up. So you're saying that everybody except the fire department will get 140 hours?
160. And firefighters who are on a rotation, they work. Now, you take like, if you had a guy that was on a 40-hour work week, it'd be the same for everybody else.
And how much time will they get?
224.
And see, if you vote to do that, I would appreciate that. My thing was, is where I use mine, when I use one day, it's 24 hours. So I run out of time way before anybody else does, because I'm using mine 24 hours of time. With the 200-something hour, it should take me to the end of the year. So in my opinion, that's rightfully fair, if you voted in, thank you.
We had a motion and a second, I believe.
We did.
Any other discussion?
James, only question, what's the difference in the one that we got planned here versus the one?
224 hours.
That's your script.
Yes.
The student 160.
Yes, because I got to thinking about it. After that, it went out, because Igor and I, or Randy, I'm sorry, Randy and I, Randy and I talked Friday, and I told him, because we were talking about it, and I told him that, you know, the hourly rate wasn't the issue, it was the weekly rate. And so I just kept thinking about it, and it finally hit me about the sick pay, that if the sick pay worked, then this ought to work. Because it's the same, it's the same, it's the same thing.
Well, that's fine, because then that don't cheat you.
Right. And I don't, I absolutely don't want to cheat anybody. I mean, I want it to be fair, I want it to be above, above and, you know, aboard, everything like it's supposed to be. I just don't, I don't think we can pay the thousands of dollars extra that we paid this pasture. It was thousands, multiple thousands of dollars we paid this pasture.
Well, James, I couldn't see his face for the pledge, and I went blank, but I didn't call him Igor.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I try not to get into nicknames in this.
I could have called him your sister's name, but it'd have beat me up.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item B is consideration of resolution 2014-02, adopting the small purchase procurement.
Okay, what is the, James, explain that.
That was just something that come down from TDOT. It's just, it was a letter that they sent, and it's just like, it's just saying that we will go with their guidelines, basically.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Consideration of appointing an administrator service for Safe Routes to School Phase Two.
What we've had to do on the Safe Routes to Schools, of course, we've had multiple delays with it, and we're under a little bit of pressure in the state to get moving, and we have got until August to get a shovel in the ground on Phase One. What I opted to do, and this was based on the state's recommendation, they couldn't make you do it, was that we change the person who was handling Phase Two of the Safe Routes to Schools, which was Mike Callahan, who was doing Phase One, where it was started in 2008, we're now in 2014, and we're still hitting snags. And so I opted to remove him from Phase Two. But what we have to do now is, you all have to give, basically me and Tim, permission to go to the website that the state has, they'll get, and pick at least three options, and then hire one of those to move forward to the project. And that's what this is, giving us permission to do that and move forward and to bring in a new coordinator for this project.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I will say, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item D is discussion of leave of absence for Police Chief Maurice Schultz. And I don't know, that's, I guess that's merely for information only?
Well, I think you had, I think the Civil Service gave, since, gave you a letter. I've got a copy of it. It's just announcing that they met and have approved him a leave of absence beginning the 3rd of February and continuing like to the Monday after the election in May.
And by law, there'd be no way of contesting it anyway.
Well, Terry, Terry has looked over that, and by the charter, that's, it says that that the Civil Service Board can approve that, and then they just have to inform you all, and that's what, they sent you the letter, informing you that they're taking that action.
All right. So that's all we need to discuss on that issue.
Wait a minute, but in the charter, a leave of absence may not be granted for any other employment opportunity excluding military. And that is in the charter.
Well, that would have to be taken up with the Civil Service Board, since they are the only ones who have the authority to do that, and we actually probably don't even have the authority to overturn their decision.
Now, wait a minute, we appoint and chief, they don't.
I understand, but we have to go by the charter, and the charter gives them the right to make the decision, which they did.
And you are under civil service?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I think that proved itself out several years ago. Years ago, exactly.
Okay, item E is consideration of sponsorship of 2013-2014 Cock County High School baseball. What's your pleasure on that?
Donate $500.
Donate 100 from each one of our accounts?
Yeah. I put Ken on, I told him to take that, anyway, we give $500.
Yeah. Okay. I'll say.
Okay. Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Discussion of inclement weather leave.
Mayor, I just, I asked that that be on there. You know, we had some really bad weather last week, it's worse we've had in 20 years, according to the weather forecasters, and they're calling for bad weather again tonight. Actually, I got a weather alert about before I came into the meeting, that was calling for three to six inches in the mountains. And basically, I just wanted to make sure that y'all were fine with the way that we handled that last week when it happened. Some of the employees were not real happy with it, and so, I just wanted to make sure that you all were with the way that it was handled, and if not, if there's some way you wanted us to modify the way we did the closings and the handling of the city under the adverse conditions of the blizzard.
I'll just say thank you for keeping us notified, and me personally, I think it went fine. That's your discretion, I mean, that's what you do.
Are you going to go by grammar school schedule?
Initially, but now, just like this past time, like, if it's, like in the morning, if grammar school calls it, because it's easy for everybody to know, instead of everybody trying to track everybody down. But then, if it turns out that it does not hit or something, we'll be calling, telling them, "Come on in." But as far as the first initial warning that, "Yeah, we're going to close," it's just like I did last time, if grammar school closes, we're going to close, unless it looks like we can go ahead and then we'll open two hours later, we'll do whatever. We can modify, we're not, just like last week, grammar school was out three and a half days, and we were out two. I mean, we didn't just say, "Well, if grammar school's out, we get a free day out." We just used that as the way to start it, instead of trying to find everybody and say, "Don't come in this morning, it's too bad." If the grammar school closes, then we're going to plan to close, but that plan can change. And if it does change, then we start trying to call everybody and say, "Look, we're going to go ahead and open, it's not that bad, it went around us, whatever, come on in." But as far as the initial info, yeah, we're going to go with grammar school closes, then we're going to plan on closing, but we may override that. Because we always got the option to not close. But that gets the word out quick, because everybody can hear it on the radio, see it on TV, grammar school is closed, so, and everybody, you know, and this is what we got into on the disagreements with some folks, everybody don't get to close, you know, emergency services can't close. And so, we don't close everybody, you know, it's just, I hate, you know, my wife hates the word "nonessential personnel," that just drives her crazy, but I mean, you got to have something to call people that you can, that you can get by with for a day in a blizzard, because, you know, you're not going to have some things going on, and it's not worth trying to get your people hurt to get to town, to deal with the public, it's not going to show up. So, what we do is, folks that we can let stay home, we let stay home, but the folks that's got to come to work, just got to come to work, and that's what you sign up for when you take those jobs.
Business pretend to all departments.
Because you have to, you have to keep the streets clear, you have to keep the animals fed. You can't say, "Well, it's bad weather, we won't come in and feed the animals for three days." There are certain things we have to do, we have an obligation to do, that we have obligation to meet with the public, you know, public safety the main one. But, you know, there's some services that you just, you basically have to suspend during a blizzard, you know. And so, there's no need having those folks try to get to town, or get here, and worry about trying to get home, you're better off just to let them stay home. But the folks that have to get here, and what we do is, if you, excuse me, if you're emergency services, and you can't get here, we'll try to get to you, we'll try to come and get you. So, I mean, you know, because you've got, because we got to have it, you know, police-
And I'm like you, I got a weather alert before I come in too. And it's like, even the policemen sometimes can't get out, so, I mean, if it got that bad, there shouldn't be that many people, but anyway, I wouldn't want them out getting hurt.
Well, what we do is, when, just like last week, we tell them, answer emergency calls only, if you can take reports by phone, take them by phone, you know, the detectives, we have them work in the office, work on your files, if you have to go out, then go out. But if you don't have to go out, stay in the station. But we're there if we're needed. If something happens, we can respond.
Can I ask a little question?
Yes.
I noticed that in Blount County and other places, they opened up warming stations because people's water busts, their electricity went out, so what warrants, is there a plan for Cock County and Newport to open up a station, a warming station for people that have lost electricity?
Well, we don't have a warming station, but we have an emergency shelter, which is the community center, which that we open up, well, then, the, that comes from the order of the mayor, or from emergency management, or somebody like that, we don't, you know, out. But the emergency, the community center is designated as an emergency shelter in the event that one is needed.
I believe in 1993, we had the blizzard, they opened it up.
Yeah, we've opened it several times, Joe.
And they're also the National Guard?
Yes, but in town, she was asking about in town, that's the one in town is the community center.
So what happens, I mean, what has to happen for those shelters to open?
Then, we have to be aware of a need.
Like if there's a big power outage?
You know, once a need arises, then we meet the need. But we don't, I mean, but we don't open if there's no need, if we're not aware of a need.
What's happened in the past, James, if I may ask, is Red Cross has always contacted the city, the city has deemed it to open it as a shelter, then that's when they contact us, and we make sure that the community center is available to, Red Cross is the shelter.
There was like, like in '96 or '97, I'm not sure, the interstate closed, and we opened. It's, usually you can, I mean, there'll be, it's like you mentioned, a power outage or something, I mean, something will happen to where that you, that you know that there is a need out there, you know, and that's when we open.
The last one was the Benfield spill that came, where we opened the community center where those people were reaching-
And that was done with by emergency management. That's why I mentioned emergency management, I meant to go. That one was, because we had to evacuate, and some people didn't have anywhere to go, so we initiated the shelter for an evacuation spot for people that didn't have relatives or somebody to go to, that they could go to the community center and wait for the area to clear, that they could go back home.
I don't think we're emotional, Tom, correct this, Tom.
Oh, yeah, it is. Item G, Tim, I think, has requested that that be put next month?
I do have a policy that is easier to read with some additional information.
Okay.
And I do want to make sure that you all have a copy of this, it is being mandated, the concussion policy, and it has four forms in it that is going to be required for us to track and maintain for three years. But the way the policy read is in your handout, we were not pleased with it, so we revisited and made sure to get you something that's a little bit easier to read, and it has the forms in it that you'll know what we have to track with coaches, parents, and if there is any.
Are you going for motion?
If you're comfortable with what you've read, with what we've already proceeded, this is the same policy, we've just put it in a better format for you, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with it. I don't think we've got much choice.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
One thing I haven't done is, on January 1st, Brandon admitted his obligation for his probation, and Brandon Norton is our new athletics coordinator for Newport Park and Intermodal Park.
Welcome aboard.
Sir.
Maybe three or four minutes, if anybody in the audience has something pressing you'd like to comment on.
I do.
Yes.
Did you or the board, I'm trying to find now, I was asked to find out whether you are the board or and the board approve the cannibalism, Habitat, Humanity, the choice of mattresses?
We did.
So, who's the letter sent to you?
What, I think what she said, Mayor, I just, I asked, the gentleman that come and spoke to me about it before I contacted y'all, I just asked him if he didn't care, just for the sake of the record, to get us something in writing from Habitat, asking to utilize that, and that's what she's talking, I think that's what she's talking about. I was the one asked for that letter.
Is that what you were?
They didn't know who to send the letter to, because we didn't know who approved that.
Well, basically, I approved it, but I, but I-
You sent the link, sent the letter to me.
But I discussed it with y'all to make sure y'all-
Yeah, because I think that's a good thing to do, to help them out.
So send this to you?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I just want to thank all those poor people that had to get out and work in that place. There's a street, or the big, my garbage, they got there before I got out to the street. But I appreciate, appreciate these hard-working city and politics.